City Council meeting is called to order.
Roll call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, October 17th, 2018 at 7:30 PM. Mrs. Arrington, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, please rise for a moment of silent meditation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval minutes from the meeting of October 3rd, 2018, and bills for payment on October 13th and 20th, 2018. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington.
That takes us to a presentation that I may all want to present.
A member of the Police Department here? Thank you, Madam President. Ladies and gentlemen, once again, I'm here representing the Summer Basketball League, and we are honored, happy, that we have the finest group of officers that participate by providing security, and sometimes they're there enjoying the game as well. I know one of the officers, he was into it. I thought he was gonna be a referee. I mean, he was really doing it. But their job is very difficult. Sometimes we have 200, maybe 300 individuals there, and they're busy. They aren't just standing around or sitting in the car. But what impressed me is when they communicate and talk to the kids, and the kids don't have any fear regardless of what they see on TV. Our officers are doing a fine job, and I'd like to present this to you. On behalf of the Summer League, on behalf of the city, on behalf of the mayor and council, we thank you very much for being there for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I try to give them the mic, but they won't take the mic. I give them the mic, he shakes my hand. I don't have no argument with you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone for repository sales? Is there anyone for repository sales? Last call for repository sales. That takes us to citizens to be heard, and Jason Brendel is up first.
Good evening, Madam President, Erie City Council, Chamber Administration, and fellow Erieites. Let's pause for a moment to thank the men and women of the Erie Police Department and those law enforcement professionals for their exemplary civil service in protecting our peaceful right to assemble during 45's visit. We, the citizens of Erie, request that 45 pay his tab to our hometown. As victims who stand with Dr. Ford, voices are heard today, so do those who have been victimized by being socially excluded and being mistreated. 2014, 57; 2016, 39; 2017, 37. For four years, leaders in the LGBT community have been pointing fingers, putting blame on others, and acting uncivil for that matter. You can see that with the results in our score for the Human Rights Campaign. Today, it stops. It ceased, and as the records show, not just myself in 2018, but the new era in Erie's future came together in ways I wish others would see as a small step in our right direction. Plus also reflect in their civil selfless service to our city. Equitable participation, social inclusion, and everyone working together this year has paid off. No negativity occurred, and this is not a false narrative. I am committed and would like to work with them to raise our score, truly unite those who believe in Erie, and move Erie respectfully forward with love leading the way. As you are aware, Erie City LGBT Council is working on a proposed ban to ban convergent therapy in the city of Erie. Mayor Joe Chambers Administration, Erie City Council, and the community came together for the LGBT youth in the city. I approached Erie School Board about forming a gay-straight alliance in Erie Public Schools. I know I presented you the Human Rights Campaign Municipal Quality Index of 2014, 2016, and 2017, key documents, and appropriately behaved in a civil, positive, proactive, and my true selfless, citizen-centered civic mindset. Today, I am here to report, we are halfway there to 100 with the 2018 Municipal Quality Index from the Human Rights Campaign. Like I mentioned before, working well with the Chamber Administration and City Council, we went up 13 points in one year. It's because of everyone coming together. And I'm wearing purple because tomorrow is Spirit Day. No more bullying, no more negativity, no more hate. I think Jon Bon Jovi's grandmother, who is rumored to be from Erie, is singing "We Are Halfway There." Thank you to all those who believe in love, working together, and treating those who like to be treated with respect, dignity, and as you like to be treated. On a 2018 index, please place close attention. Let's put the negativity and displeasing news of our region, with 16501 being the poorest and being the worst for the minority community aside. Please look under municipality as an employer. City contractor nondiscrimination ordinance is a tongue-in-cheek way of saying "New Florida." I would like this to be a clear indication in supporting community benefit agreements, because the LGBT community is considered a minority community. I've presented this to Erie County United. Please play close attention to Roman numer number two, municipality as employer, and Roman numer number four, law enforcement. I hope in 2019, these two areas will be your blueprint to raising our score once again. It's time to shake up being the status quo at City Hall. Maybe the $30,000 to $40,000 price tag for 45 could pay for that hard legwork we have to do in 2019, or the viaduct. This is truly another feather in our caps as we transform our region into an LGBT-friendly region to work, to pray, to live, to learn, to love. Let's not celebrate yet, but let's continue working well together and not be leaving individuals out of the process. A simple reminder that these points we missed or missing represent citizens leaving Erie, from the quality of life to our workforce, to public accommodation, to our own City Hall and public service. We truly need to reflect a diverse, inclusive, transparent, and civil community where all walks of life can thrive. A reminder, November 6th is the general election.
My name is Mary DeTulio, 4356 Miller Avenue. After reading the Quality of Life Ticketing Program, I considered three things: how this will improve the quality of my life, how city officials contribute to the quality of life in Erie, and how some city officials apply the idiom "do as I say, not as I do" to the quality of life in Erie. There are several outlandish rules and disorderance, like the one about removing recycle bins before daybreak, and I wonder, have you all done that in the past? I'm also curious how it is that residents of the South Shore area where some city officials live can put their leaves unbagged out into the street, eliminating a lot of hard work and expense, and the city trucks come and clean up their leaves on the taxpayers' dime while the rest of Erie has to use expensive biodegradable bags or costly bins. I would call this a double standard totally in favor of the wealthy of Erie. The city's demand that snow will be removed from sidewalks within three hours of snowfall has been found to be absolutely absurd by my friends and neighbors, since this is impossible because most people work. I'm curious, will tickets have a verified timestamp when snow begins to fall in a specific area because any observant person knows weather events begin at different times for different locations? And if the city is successful in demolishing the viaduct, will the sidewalks along the Bayfront Connector be kept free from snow and ice at all time? When I think about quality of life, though, the residents of Florida Avenue immediately come to my mind. I think it is deplorable, downright criminal, that those citizens have not been provided any relief to the dangerous living conditions that the city has created there. Since those citizens don't live in a flood zone, they aren't eligible for flood insurance, so there's no coverage for the damage done by the city's negligence. Flooding occurs on a regular basis, and I'm pretty sure everyone can remember the big one almost a year ago. The firemen removed the bodies of the two men that died, but the city's involvement ended there. The city didn't help pump the more than three feet of water out of the homes, or send garbage trucks to help collect the huge amount of damaged items that had to be thrown away. Even today, the city completely ignores the quality of life for the residents on Florida Avenue, leaving a lawsuit as the only recourse for the family who lost their loved ones. Frankly, I don't know how any city official who ignores such horrific conditions can look themselves in the mirror and say they want quality of life for Erie. There is simply no excuse. It's also apparent to me that the quality of life for the citizens in Erie is gonna take another really big hit. Erie government's totally jumping on board for the 5G rollout that's scheduled to happen in the near future. I find it curious that over 300 mayors in U.S. Conference of Mayors are banding together to sue the FCC because of the forced 5G rollout. Those mayors are concerned about the lack of control, privacy, and adverse health effects because of the increased exposure to the EMF and microwave radiation that will be caused by the 5G system. Meanwhile, there doesn't seem to be even the slightest concern by our mayor. Smart electric and water meters that admit radiation have been installed in our homes without our consent. Let's face it, a city that exposes its residents to increased radiation is not family-friendly. But then again, you allow the Water Authority to dump the neurotoxic poison hydrofluoric acid in our drinking water, and who knows, maybe all this is evidence that the fluoride is working. I feel like Erie is becoming trapped in a novel 1984 written by George Orwell that warns against a world governed by propaganda, intense surveillance, and total censorship. Orwell's book relates, "There are no exceptions. Life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness is lost by all, even the elected officials." And if you've not read 1984, you should. The ordinance establishing a Quality of Life Ticketing Program threatens potentially enormous fines on the already struggling, overtaxed homeowners in the city of Erie. My question to you is, are you gonna mail a copy of this ordinance to all city residents so they will be aware of how quality of life in Erie is to be dictated? Maybe you should concentrate on the city administration's maybe many imperfections instead of the homeowners before you pass this ordinance that threatens quality of life and freedom. Please clean up your own house and lead by example. And in your packet, there's information about symptoms of EMF and microwave transmission toxicity that were identified by the military, so as those around you become ill, you can't say that you didn't know.
Good evening. My name is Howard Bibbs. I reside at 2931 Chesna Street, Erie, PA. I am also here to talk about quality of life. I looked in the dictionary, quality of life is the well-being and happiness of people. Life is comfortable and satisfying. Then it says, "A vibrant and growing community do not improve everyone's quality of life." Society, people are working for a common purpose, sociology, developing human society. Now, I know you people up there, we voted you in to make calls for us, but when it comes to quality of life, let's look at quality of life. I remember hearing on TV that Erie ranked 1499 or 1498 out of 1,500 cities, and there's a reason for that. There's a reason for that. The same time that that was mentioned, the news was showing how buildings were going up, the news was showing how plaza and stuff was being renewed, and then there was a guy came on, his name wasn't important to me, but he came up saying, "Well, I deal in hedge funds, and there's people that's dealing in hedge fund." One thing about quality of life, it has nothing to do with wealth. It has something to do with the well-being of your people, okay? I think when it comes to our city, the city has missed something. There's people that are paying their taxes, but they're living in poverty. They're paying their taxes. They own their home, or they're buying their home, but they literally are in poverty. To me, if we're gonna move the quality of life, we would, number one, start looking at some of the old ordinance that we have on the book. There's one ordinance that's on the book that was put on the book about 15, 16 years ago by Mr. Borger. That was the last thing he did before he passed, and it stated that for communities to grow and come together, and we can do something about the crime on the streets, every new home being built should have a front porch. Now, I know we should be able to go and find that because that's an ordinance. So if we're gonna deal with quality of life, let's put these front porches on all these new homes, because that's an ordinance already. That's already an ordinance. And let's keep in mind, if we're gonna make a change, let's change some of the poverty that we do have in this town. There's people paying taxes, but they're living in poverty. I remember in 2012, a gentleman came, he was standing here, he was in tears. I don't know if anybody can remember this, but he was in tears. An older gentleman. He was older than me, and I was standing right up against the wall. He said, "I just lost my mate. She had money coming in, I had money coming in, and now I'm only living on $1,000. I don't know how I'm gonna make it." Two months after that, the school district double taxed us, which y'all know I've been fighting, fighting until I got an answer on it, but I was fighting against that. I don't know how that man even made it. I don't even know who he is or where he came from, but he was dressed real nice, so I know he wasn't living in a dump. But he was trying to keep his home, and he was asking for help, but nobody asked him, "How can we help you?" But we're talking about quality of life, but we're not giving a helping hand to a man that was standing up here crying? My mom told me, and my dad told me, "A man don't cry," but I stood up against the wall and saw that man cry. So if we're gonna deal with quality of life, we gotta start moving poverty. People, that's 125 poverty, they gotta move to 135. 135 poverty, they gotta live, they're gonna move to 150 poverty. Only way that this town is gonna make it, we gotta start changing the law where people can work here and take their money south of the border, and I've been arguing that point, too. They make their money here, but they don't spend their money here. They don't even pay school taxes here. They don't pay city or, well, they gotta pay the county tax, because they live in the county, I guess. They gotta pay that tax, but they're not spending their money here. So what I'm seeing, I'm seeing we're being punished. The people that has been loyal to the city for over 60-some years, we're being punished for being loyal to this city. And I told you guys this, I'm single. I can go back to renting. I don't have to keep paying taxes.
It's election season, they keep calling about those polls, you know, who you're gonna vote for. Come on. Randy Barnes, 109 Walton Point, Erie, Pennsylvania. I want to just do a little recap. When I was here last, we talked a little bit about Jefferson Society and how I think that we need to ignore that request not to pay taxes, or have some kind of pilot, or some kind of, I guess if I read from the article that next day, it was about the deal. Well, the only deal there is, is you pay your taxes. That's the deal, okay? And just as a recap, remember, we talked about Jefferson Society has received $572,000 of Erie Gaming revenue money. I see tonight, the city is gonna get $50,000 of Erie Gaming revenue money to repair sidewalks on the east side around Wayne Park and do some improvements, $50,000. But yet, we all are okay with the Jefferson Society getting 11 times that. What did they do with that money? Well, I tell you what they did with it. They subsidized all the people that go to the Jefferson Society, because they didn't have to pay as much, or maybe they got in free. None of you, I don't think, told the Jefferson Society buy a building on State Street, when you've got Erie Insurance, the Public Library again, and Mercyhurst, and on and on and on, of auditoriums that have speakers. So enough about that. I think we're past that, I hope. If you're a businessman, and this is like the business of government, right? We're here about the business of government. If you're a businessperson, and you have several businesses, and you look at those businesses and you say, "That business continues to lose money year after year after year after year, has never made a penny. It costs me money every year," that business does. Yet someone knock on your door, say, "You know what? I'll take that business off your hands, and I'll give you the same service you get now. The same service. I'll take the business off your hands. You don't have to put any more money into it." If I was a businessman, I wouldn't have to spend too much time thinking about that one. But yet, you seven, along with a bunch of other people, have been talking about this EMTA for how many years? Was it a year or two ago, the county offered to take it over? I go back to a good friend of mine who spent almost his entire life career in the business of government, and he always keeps telling me about, "We have all these silos in Erie County. We have Milcreek, and Erie, and Summit, and Wayne Township, and East Springfield, West Springfield, and Conneville, I go on, Cory, and I go, Wattsburg, and whatever. I go on and on. We have all these silos. We don't work together. We don't have any regionalism. We don't have a regional transport company." I'll be down in Youngsville tomorrow, and I'll see a bus going by that services Youngsville, Pennsylvania, and services Warner's Service here. It's like a regional service. But we don't have a regional service in Erie. We have the service that, "Well, Erie wants to kind of control it." I don't know. It's such mixed up, it's so counter-counter to common sense, isn't it? I want to keep a business around. I want to control that business. I want the five votes, not four, not three, not two, not any. I want five votes. I want to control this business that loses money every year, and it's gonna lose every money for eternity, right? Federal government gives us money to run the bus company, don't they? I think I want to, if I could, boy, I'd really like to lend my last minute to this young lady that talked about the water, because I have a white bathtub at home, and I notice when I turn on the water in my bathtub, and I fill it up, and I don't, we don't put bubbles or none of that, just plain water. I leave the room, and I come back into the room, I look at that water, and I think, "Ooh, why does that have a color to it? Why am I looking into my bathtub and not seeing white?" Well, so some time ago, I said, "Do I want to be drinking that purposely?" No, so I have to filter my water. I do buy bottled water that's been filtered through reverse ismosis, or I use Brita, because something that's colored like that, just like that coffee you're drinking, you have to wonder, if you continue to do that over and over and over and over again. You ever see a coffee mug that your mother-in-law's had for like 16 years, and looked in the bottom of it, it was white on the outside? Hey, you guys have a great evening. I appreciate the time to talk to you.
Good evening, everyone. Richard Wagner, 4228 State Street. I came down here tonight because August 24th edition of the Erie Times, the sheriff's sale were printed in that paper, that edition. And the print was so tiny, I thought, "God, you know, there's a lot of properties here for sale." So the best I could come up with is, there were 12 names per inch, so I measured the inches. There's about 1,350 homes on that delinquency list that could be sheriff's sale. So this leads me to what I came down here for. I want to know what City Council is prepared to do to explain in the August 24th edition of the Erie Times, 1,350 properties that were listed for tax delinquency and the potential for a sheriff's sale. I asked myself, what possibly could have caused this spike in the amount of properties that are in arrears on their property taxes? And I have come to one conclusion, and it is not the first time I have been down here to talk to you about this problem. Let me explain. The Erie School District in 2012 started a scheme based on the premise that they would like to bring their billing cycle into the same timeframe as the other districts in Erie County. On the surface, that doesn't seem like such a bad idea, but what they did first, and it was found to be illegal, was to offer an early payment discount of 3% that moved that payment, if you took the advantage of the 3%, into the prior year. Anyone who used the 3% discount payment plan paid two school district tax bills in one year to achieve that discount. And like I said, that was determined to be too generous or illegal. So in 2016, they changed the billing. They didn't move the old date. They created a new one in the same 2016 calendar year, November 30th, became the second due date for 2016. Both payments came with penalties and late fees if not paid. You might ask yourself, what the antics of the Erie School District had to do with the spike of tax delinquencies in 2016? You see, the year when the double payment occurred, being 2016, finally fell into the three-year timeframe when your home, if taxes aren't paid, can be sold for sheriff's sale. A simple trip by council or City Treasurer's Office could easily lend some clarity to the mess created by the Erie School District. I brought a document with me, which really should clear the air, about everything I'm saying. It's a report generated by the county government. It's my tax bills for 15 years, and there's a certain amount of continuity to the printout. There's a modest increase. It shows year after year, modest increase in my property taxes. In 2012 is when my spike occurred. The 2011 amount was $6,452 for my taxes, followed by calendar year where my tax bill jumped to $10,243. And then to prove my point even further, in 2013, my taxes went back down to $6,398. I hope you understand that in this timeframe, there was no millage increases, nor did I do any improvements to my home to generate this increase. Why? Because of 2016 events, is there 1,350 homes ready for sheriff's sale. For many, it was impossible to make sense out of the double taxation. People were confused or didn't understand. Some probably said, "I paid my taxes in April like I have for years," and that was probably a common refrain. The irony of all this was that the citizens who have prided themselves by being The irony of all this was that the citizens who have prided themselves by being responsible taxpayers were caught up in a scheme created by the school district where fiscal responsibility isn't practiced or understood. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Dorothy Jordan, 3436 West 10th Street. I'm here tonight to request a public hearing, begging your help to save the McBride Viaduct for the safety and security of the disabled and children who depend on it every day to cross over the treacherous CSX railroad tracks. Month after month, our pleas fall on deaf ears, how sad and despicable. We need to elect representatives who will represent the whole community and not just the special interests. Albert Einstein came to this country as a refugee. Pennsylvania Governor Tom Ridge was raised in the Franklin Terrace Projects. Ridge's maternal grandparents were immigrants from Czechoslovakia, and his paternal great-grandparents immigrated from Great Britain. Tom earned a scholarship to Harvard and served in the U.S. Army in Vietnam. Ron DiNacola is the son of an immigrant bricklayer. His father died young and left his mother to raise three children. She made sure her children were educated. Ron is committed to seeing every child has access to good quality education. Ron DiNacola served his country as a U.S. Marine. Ron graduated first in his platoon and was awarded the Leatherneck Magazine Award for Leadership. Ron DiNacola won the All-Marine Boxing Title, Two Golden Glove Title.
Excuse me, excuse me, you can't make a political statement.
I'm not. I'm just giving the history of Ron DiNacola.
He's a candidate. So as long as he's a candidate, you can't.
Oh, all right. Thank you.
My name is Freda Tepfer. I live at 1738 West 23rd Street in Erie. I'm a certified orientation and mobility specialist. I am a native plant gardener, and my garden is certified pollinator-friendly garden by the Penn State Master Gardener Program. I have two issues that I want to address. Each issue is an issue of substance as well as process. And if I don't run out of time, I will mention the quality of life ordinance. First of all, I want to talk about the installation of the curb ramps that is being done under city contract. And you, the City Council, approve these contracts. I know that the city is aware of requirements for adequate pedestrian access and detectable warning during construction, because I saw the handout that they prepared, partly in response to the numerous concerns that I have brought up to them. Numerous curb ramps have been installed with corners left in disturbed and hazardous conditions for three weeks or more. I've sent pictures of these and notification of these to City Council members and city staff. The only pedestrian notification was plastic flagging. Plastic flagging is not detectable by people who are visually impaired. The city administration is aware of the regulations and has designed a handout describing requirements. Yet for a contract they administer, they are not in compliance with those requirements. Why are the corners in inaccessible condition for three weeks or more? And why in some places, for example Sixth and Walnut, are all four corners disturbed at one time for three weeks? This is a real issue for people who use powered wheelchairs, hand-powered wheelchairs, all kinds of people. When you encumber all four corners, there's really no way for people to get around. Perhaps, this should not happen. Perhaps in the city, in bidding this work, did not include provisions requiring timely completion of the projects and not encumbering all four corners simultaneously and providing acceptable and detectable notification. The city needs to amend these contracts. The city needs to ensure that future contracts, which you folks approve, do not allow this to happen. The second issue is the alternative landscape ordinance. And this is relevant, particularly at this time, when you are being asked to vote on the quality of life ticketing ordinance, as well as the newest version of the International Property Maintenance Code, which talk about weeds and grass height and all these provisions. It is vital that the city move the alternative lawn ordinance forward. This was initiated in part by former council member Brennan, and there was a group of residents of this town, homeowners, property owners, people from the neighborhood, inner-city art house, who worked on the wording of an ordinance for at least three years. I got involved late in the process. According to the sustainability coordinator, the draft was presented to the City Council about a year ago, and the City Council referred it to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission reviewed it, I think, several times. They approved the draft and recommended that it be sent to the solicitor for review. That's all that's happened. It is now sitting somewhere in Public Works, waiting to be sent to the solicitor. There are reasons associated with having an alternative lawn ordinance that are important for so many reasons. The mayor wants to save water, he wants to have less energy used. A complex landscape does a better job of receiving and infiltrating water. It also can reduce the need for leaf blowers, which are a major source of pollution and noise. It's a very huge benefit for biodiversity. I have sent, and I will resend to you, the link to the recent testimony by Dr. Doug Taloney of the University of Delaware to the Pennsylvania General Assembly about the importance of native plants, and I hope that you would read it. Also, if you're going to pass a quality of life ticketing ordinance, I want to be sure that businesses are not allowed to leave huge snowburns blocking the sidewalk for weeks on end, and nobody does anything about it. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Andre Williams, 2499 Bison Court. I got no notes or nothing. Actually, wow, I don't have nothing to complain about. I think I love Erie. Erie is beautiful, you all doing an awesome job. Me personally, where I'm from, I love this city. I am here to talk about, because I'm a driver at EMTA, and I've been there eleven years. And for the first time, I've seen somebody who's never seen this with management. And what they're doing is, they're actually hiring drivers into management. So now you got a driver that's been driving for fifteen years, is actually gonna be able to know what a driver goes through. At the same time, he's gonna know what management expects from the driver. So instead of arguing, now they actually are talking. And I have never seen that. And then I know y'all said something about the board, you know, you're picking a board, and it's time for a change. Well, if you haven't been on Fourteenth and French and walked in there, it's changing, like, awesome change. And I just wanted to be able to let y'all know that y'all should go down there and actually just look at it, walk through the building, and just watch and see the vibe in there, and how the drivers are getting along with management now. I mean, he's hiring a dispatcher for management now. So now you got the dispatchers who are so close to the managers, and now you have an actual dispatcher that's gonna become a manager. They're also sending the director scheduling. She's down right now getting a week training in scheduling, routing, to make it better, to make it safe. We are doing safety training now with the drivers. And we are, we are really trying, as bus drivers, I mean, we deal with massive people, and we deal with different personalities. And regardless of what we feel like when we get home, when we get to work, it's all about smiling and trying to get everybody safely where they want to be. We try to make sure the community is safe, we're safe, our passengers are definitely safe. And I know, I talked to a few people here already, and they was just, it's always seemed like it's negativity about the bus company. And it really isn't. We really, really are trying. And like I said, I love Erie. I think y'all doing great. But I just ask that sometime, you know, just step down there, come to the building. I have never seen, I mean, nobody on a bus. Public transportation is not bad. We do provide excellent transportation. I mean, we do. And, you know, we get it from all ends. We get that the fares are going up, you know, or we get that sometime that we don't run late enough. But you know what? The board says, "Time for a change, and let's make a change." Look, if you want to run all day, we can run all day. They want to run all night, we can run all night, as long as there's safety involved in it, as long as everybody's on the same page. And like I said, management, eleven years, I have never seen management the way they are now. So I'm hoping if management's changing, I'm hoping that the board is changing, then maybe we all can get along here, because it's a lot of grief sometimes with the drivers and management, or you hear them talking about the board and the steward drivers. But right now, management's really stepped up, and they have showed that, "Look, we're trying to make it better for y'all. We know if we're happy, and we walk out that door, then guess what? Our passengers gonna see that in us. They gonna see it, "Wow, this driver is very happy today." And we try to accommodate everybody. Sometimes, I mean, we do the school trippers, and you talking about, we talking about a lot of little children, and they get really, really loud in the afternoon. But we're there with them. We know, we trying to, you know, talk to them, calm them down. Because I say, "Look, you got five minutes with me. Five minutes." After that five minutes, you be home, so, you know, sit down, try not to run up beside them, because it's a big bus. They see it, they want to run up and down, they want to play, and that's fine. But safety. If I hit the brakes, if something happens, I don't want you to hurt yourself. So again, if you haven't been down to EMTA, y'all really should come down there, check out what management doing, because they really... I mean, I'm a driver, I'm not nothing with management. They doing they thing, I'm doing mine, I'm driving the bus. But when I see somebody that's doing a great job, I'd like to just say, "Everybody should see that." You know, y'all should not just see the negative in EMTA or the buses or whatever we're doing. Just go down there and be like, "Let me see what's going on. Let me see what Jeremy is doing, or Eddie is doing, or whoever's at the door at that time. Let's see what they're doing." And then if you don't, believe me, I'm on Route 2128, you can jump on my bus any day, and I'll show you how we do it. I mean, we are awesome. And that's why I just want to say thank you, and I love the city. Sorry, I ain't got no complaints or nothing, but, you know. I ain't no notes, I just stopped you down.
(APPLAUSE).
No clapping.
I had to clap.
Michael Keys, 3612 Reed Street. I would like to talk first about the quality of life. The quality of life ordinance, you know, let me first clarify it, that I am for progress, and I'm for anything we can do to make our city a better city. But I don't think that this particular ordinance has been completely thought out in all the ramifications of, that once you put it in ink and it becomes a law, that we thought about. Like I was having a conversation online with somebody about, my granny used to have a rocking chair that she put on her front porch, and she liked to rock on it in the evenings, you know, when the weather was appropriate. And now, my grandmother's a criminal. My grandmother will be receiving fines. That's not improving my grandmother's quality of life. And I know that you've had study sessions on it, and there were concerns about it, but there are real concerns in this legislation that impact a lot of people, a lot of people who live in the inner-city. If you didn't see the one about hauling recyclables without a license, which will make scrapping illegal, which a lot of people who have low and moderate incomes scrap stuff, you know, turn it into the metal place to get money, you know? And I don't think we realize all the ramifications of that, to include not parking your commercial vehicle on a city street, where, you know, if you're a small businessperson, and if you live in certain sectors of town, there is no off-street parking. And so what do you do? Those are types of things I don't think had been fully thought out. And I do see that we're getting $50,000 for the sidewalks for adjacent to the Wayne Park area. But if you know that the city has made its busing, made it where its busing is now two miles away from the school, as opposed to one mile, so these kids that we're talking about, we're making their streets safe for, and we're making them access to school, these kids come across that bridge, because that bridge is less than two miles from that school. So I just think that we should be aware of that. And the other thing is, I don't know what's going on with EMTA, but, and I know you're gonna vote on ups and downs on some of the people who were selected, but it would be my hope that we could find some more people who are normal, regular citizens to be part of the EMTA. I look at the list, and I see, you know, two one percenters, you know? And I think that we need a broad-based coalition of people in these organizations to help run these organizations. Someone wants to, like, if everybody is the same, ordinarily, they think alike, they have the same values, and so if you don't value diversity within these committees and within these boards, we're gonna end up the same way we are. You know? And when I think of quality of life, I think of CBAs, because nothing's gonna uplift the quality of life in this city other than, faster than a community benefits agreement. When a company says that they are unwilling to hire our people, or unwilling for their development, or to hire them for their end-use, far as I'm concerned, that's a business that we don't want. We have to be able to stand up for our city. You're our City Council. If they cannot respect that they want to hire us, you should respectfully tell them, "This is not the right city." Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmen and Councilwomen. I'm Martha Wachuku, 711 Myrtle Street. I want to extend another invitation to our roundtable this coming Monday. After our last study session, you encouraged Erie County United and its coalition partners to bring to the table some local developers and business stakeholders to talk about community benefit agreements. I've gotten a few confirmations from you that you will be attended, but I just wanted to make sure again that you guys were aware of this in the mayor's office. That's going to be this coming Monday, October 23rd at 6:00 p.m. in the library in Room 219. I do realize it's GOTV season, get out the vote season, but we shouldn't have to wait for these kind of issues to come up on the ballot to sit down and talk to each other about it. So again, I just want to hand this invitation to you. Thank you.
Martha, excuse me. You said Monday, that's Tuesday, right?
Tuesday, yes. Apologies, I am tired from canvassing. Thank you.
Are there any more citizens to be heard? Are there any more citizens to be heard? Last call for citizens to be heard. This takes us into ordinances for final passage.
Council File 15647, official ordinance number 362018, and ordinance amending Article 1503.211, the Uniform Construction Code to adopt and incorporate by reference the International Fire Code 2015. By Mr. Kwiatowski, seconded by Mr. Mersky, the Council File Bill Number 15647, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 3628, be finally passed by this City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council passed Official File Ordinance Number 362018, finally by a seven, nay zero. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance Number 362018, finally by a seven, nay zero. Council File 15648, Official Ordinance Number 372018, an ordinance amending Article 1503.2112, Uniform Construction Code to adopt and incorporate by reference and the International Property Maintenance Code 2015, and to replace the first sentence of subsection 1503.21A12A to read add to section 107.3. By Mr. Kwiatowski, seconded by Mr. Mersky, the Council File Ordinance Number 15648, now known as Official File Ordinance Number 372018, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance Number 372018, finally by a seven, nay zero. Council File 15649, Official Ordinance Number 382017, an, uh, ordinance appropriating the sum of $275,067.90 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for the construction phase of 2016 GLG OO2 Green Light Go program, signal upgrade East Lake Road and Bacon Avenue. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Winarski, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15649, and now known as Official File Ordinance 382018, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance Number 382018, finally by a seven, nay zero. Council File 15650, Official Ordinance Number 392018, an ordinance to establish a quality of life ticketing program and establishing fines for violations. By Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15650, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 392018, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaff.
No.
Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.
No.
Mrs. Arrington. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance Number 392018, finally by a's five, nays two. Ordinances for first reading. Council File 16047, an ordinance in accordance with the 2018 City of Erie budget, the sum of $20,000, is appropriated from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for use by the City of Erie Police Department. These funds were received via a contribution from the Knights of St. George to be used by the bomb squad. By Mr. Winarski, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, the Council File Ordinance Number 16047, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16047 by a's seven, nay zero, on first reading. Council File 16048, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $50,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue, to be received from the Erie County Gaming and Revenue Authority. Funds will be utilized to carry out the Wayne Park Area Improvement Safe Routes to Schools project, which will be used to repair sidewalk and pedestrian areas near Wayne Park, and into, to install a drinking fountain system and a bicycle repair station in the park. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Winarski, the Council File Ordinance Number 16048, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16048 by a's seven, nay zero, on first reading. That'll take us into new business.
Madam President.
Yes.
I'd like to make a mo, a motion to move the balance of the agenda.
Are there any separations?
Can we make a second first?
I'll second that. Madam President.
I'd like to separate number four under New Business.
Are there any more separation? Moving the balance of the agenda, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mrs., Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. By Mr. Winarski, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, receiving the communication from Mayor Joe Schember appointing new board members to the EMTA Erie Metropolitan Transit Authority as follows. Jessica Molson, 1545 Fairmont Parkway Erie, one-year term ending 10/22/2019. Rick Griffith, 37 Niagara Pier Erie, two-year term ending 10/22/2020. Diane Gishing, 2218 East Lake Road Erie, three-year term ending 10/22/2021. George Willis, 1333 South Shore Drive Erie, four-year term ending 10/22/2022. And Ben Wilson, 4120 Allison Avenue Erie, five-year term ending October 22nd, 2023. Discussion? No discussion?
I would like to discuss, Madam Chairman. I'm going to vote in favor of all five recommended appointees by Mayor Schember. I did some research today and yesterday, and I found out that, um, as you, as people know, there's been a dispute from two people on EMTA board who appeared at the caucus session and said they had not resigned. We had a, um, a, a conversation with the solicitor for EMTA, Jill Nagy, who assured us that they had resigned, and that the resignations were verbal, but that they did not have to be in writing per the Municipal Authorities Act. Um, the, I also wanted to point out that one of the people who is saying he has not resigned has served on the EMTA board since 2008. The previous mayor allowed this appointment to lapse. The person who is disputing that he resigned will have served at this point for a total of 10 years, or the equivalent to two five-year terms. The previous mayor, um, this was not the only, but this is not the only person whose, um, term had been allowed to lapse. In 2017, Erie City Council, uh, received information, as, as council members do every year, on the salaries for the executive directors of independent authorities and also the board members. And in 2017, they had information that showed that, that Gary Greck's, um, board membership had expired on 12/31/11. Uh, Michael Martin, who was a mayor appointment, his, uh, board position had expired on 12/31/11. Matthew Good's appointment had expired on 12/31/16, and Mike Squealya, his position had expired on 12/31/16. The previous mayor in June of last year, um, reappointed most of those people, so that the new mayor did then not have a, um, a possibility to appoint people, it's the mayor's function to appoint people to the EMTA board, so he kind of, the previous mayor said, well, even though these people have served for as much as five years without being appointed, I'm gonna reappoint them. I don't know about all the politics that are going on here. We were told at the caucus session that, from the board members who are disputing that they resigned, that they think there's politics going on. I think there's politics going on, but I think it might be something different than the way they interpret it. What I do know is that I just attended a session at the American Planning Association Pennsylvania chapter at the Convention Center. I went to the mass transit section there, and it was presented by the Port Authority of Allegheny County and Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission. And they said that mass transit needs to be effective with maximum access, equitable to help those most in need of public transportation, and efficient to make the best use of limited resources. I believe that the people that the mayor has selected, actually in consultation with the county executive, because they both, uh, solicited applications for this, um, will achieve those things. I think one of the things that, uh, there's just an equitable issue that I've thought about. I took the bus this, I actually took the bus here tonight. I've been trying to take the bus to council meetings, but I took the Presquale Express Bus Service from the West Erie Plaza to the beach this summer. It's free bus service, and I'm thinking about the fact that, wouldn't it be great to have free bus service from the east side to Presquale, instead of having to go to, um, the West Erie Plaza to get the free bus? And I just, I wanted to thank the bus driver, I can't remember your name, um, for coming up and speaking here, because I, I wrote a story a couple of weeks ago for the Erie Reader about taking the bus. And one of the things I noticed is that not only are the bus drivers polite, but the people on the bus are generally very polite too. When they get off the bus, they thank the bus driver. Although I will tell you tonight that somebody wasn't so polite on the bus. I took a selfie to show that I was on the bus, posted on Facebook, and immediately two people said, Liz, did you notice that the person in back of you flipped you the bird? So, anyhow, sometimes the way you feel serving on City Council, but I, I think it's really important to move forward with, uh, these appointments. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Um, just a few things. We did have a meeting in, in the back room and, um, in the caucus room after the last meeting, and Attorney Nagy from the EMTA did, uh, speak with us. What she said was that, um, the board actions speak for themselves, and that, um, the people that were on the board believed that the people in question resigned. She didn't say that, she said that they resigned. And in fact, I asked her to put it in writing, and she would not do that. She wouldn't put it in writing. I've known Mr. Rush my entire adult life. I've known him since, actually, I was a child. He's served in three city administrations. He's served in state government under Governor Tom Ridge, and he's been a pillar of this community. And, um, I believe him. When he says he didn't resign, I take him at his word. I've known Mr. Greck for over a decade, and I've known him as a man of integrity. When he says he didn't resign, I take him at his word. It's a volunteer position. They have no reason to lie about it, other they just want to finish out their term. That's what they've expressed to us in the back room. I want to vote yes on these, but I can't with a clean conscience. And so, um, well, I, I went in the back room and this, before this meeting, and I asked for a compromise. And I said, how about we vote on the three members not in question, and hold off on the two until we can come to an agreement and get a resolution between the administration and the people in question, and the administration was not amenable to that. So we're here now, forced to vote on all five, and like I said, I can't with a clean conscience vote on that, you know. To, to Liz's point, you know, she praised the, the board for, or she praised the route to Presquale. The, the board that was in places are the ones who did that. We heard from the drivers and set, themselves that morale is doing well right now. So I don't think the EMTA is broken. I think that, um, and this isn't anything against the people that are on this list. I think they're good people. But at the process of how this happened, it just seems like it was a little tainted. And in recent memory, it's unprecedented to mass remove an entire board, unprecedented in modern history in our city. And so, um, with that, um, I just wanted to bring those comments to the table. And just, uh, also to point out that with the previous, you know, people resigned, but the insinuation was that Mayor Senet put all these people on so Mayor Schember would not be able, or whoever his predecessor would have been, but it's Mayor Schember, wouldn't be able to appoint. Four of the five appointments expired during the first term, expired during the first term of, of the administration, so they would, it, that wasn't necessarily accurate. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
I too know Mr. Rush and Mr. Greck personally for many years. I'm proud to call Fred one of my brothers. Fred and I had the honor of serving this country with the US Army. And soldiers are men of honor, and Fred, I have no reason to believe that Mr. Rush would lie about him not resigning. And I know Mr. Greck. He's a volunteer in public radio with me. I've never known Mr. Greck to lie. So what happened? I wish I knew. It's a he said, she said. And we even have an attorney, as Mr. Mersky pointed out, that said she believes they resigned, and that was the, what the board believes. Well, I only had about 20 credits of law at Gannon, and I do know that a verbal contract does not hold as much water as a written contract. So it would have been prudent, if there was any doubt, they should have went back and asked the two gentlemen. But that's an argument for another day. My vote today is not about power, but representation. I was elected by the citizens of Erie, the city, not the county, and my job is to make sure that their wishes and, and their bus company serves them in the best way possible. It's no secret that the majority of customers are those who have no cars, who are residents of the city, and who need the bus service. Appointing a board made up of predominantly people from the county is a dangerous precedent. I'm not saying they're not men of honor or women of honor. I'm just saying, it doesn't look good. It doesn't represent the city's values or the city's needs. 16 people, not two, should have been involved in the conversation about the breakup of the board. The 16 number is very simple. That's the 14 representatives elected by the people and the two administrators. But we didn't have that. We had two people go in the caucus, when they met and they decided what they wanted. They decided the board wasn't proper. This is a dangerous precedent. As Mr. Rush said in the back, who's next? Replacing boards we don't agree with is a dangerous precedent, because you have to ask yourself, just because you disagreed with them, you're gonna just, just, uh, you know, get rid of them and appoint new people? That's dangerous. We appointed those boards to stay out of politics, at least the perception. I'm not naive enough to believe it doesn't creep in, but the perception is that we created them to, to be independently-thinking people. And no written opinion was ever given to us, as Mr. Mersky said, by the EMT attorney or even our own solicitor, although he got his opinion. And I believe that two of the appointments are really in violation, and the solicitor and I disagree on this, but that's okay. Disagreements are good, sometimes, unless you're gonna kick me out of office. But two of the people are not city residents, and our ordinance clearly states that they should be, unless otherwise determined, and the boards were mentioned in the ordinance and the reasons why, there are some boards we have to approve, county residents, they should have been city residents. And one of the appointers, one of the appointees is a member of another board, I won't throw his name out there, but he doesn't even attend those meetings on the record. his name out there, but he doesn't even attend those meetings on a regular basis. And here you're putting him on a major board, like the EMTA, and he can't even attend one of the lesser boards on a regular basis. Look, I'm for cooperation between the city and the county, but it's a two-way street, and I don't see this being a two-way street. And for those reasons and many others, I just think we're entering dangerous precedent when we start disbanding boards because we either disagree with them, or we don't like somebody, or we think they quit, and nobody has proven that they have quit. So until you either tell me that Fred Rush is a liar and Greg, and Greg, Mr. Grack is a liar, I have no reason but to vote no on these appointments.
Madam Secretary, can I just ask, add one more thing? Actually, two things. I just want to talk about the, one of the reasons I've been taking the bus is because there is this perception that people who live in the city only travel by bus within the city. Now, the last couple of times I've taken the bus to the city council meetings, I take Route 31, which is the frontier bus route, I live on Fourth and Lincoln, and both times I took the bus, the other passengers on the bus were all people of color who were coming from Mill Creek. And they were coming from Mill Creek because that is where they worked or where they went to school. Tonight, actually, the woman who flipped me the bird, before, yeah, I went over and I had introduced myself before I saw the, my picture, that she was giving me the finger. She was on the bus with three children, and she had been shopping at the Walmart on West Ridge Road. So we are, we are no longer just a city where people are taking the bus within the city, they're going to Mill Creek and to the suburbs to shop and to work. The other thing I want to point out, my colleague is objecting to whether everybody is a city of Erie resident, but when, city council, I was not on city council, and they approved Mayor Sinnet's appointments, reappointments, two of the people who were on the board, Mike Martin and Matthew Good, both live in Mill Creek. So the person who is saying now he wants only city of Erie residents on there voted, there was a five to two vote, I believe, in, at the June meeting in 2017, so there was no concern at that time that two of the mayor's appointments were from the suburbs. So, thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
This will be my last comment. The person you're talking about is me. And yes, I voted for him, but I made an error, and when I was, when it was pointed out to me just recently, I am not the solicitor of the city of Erie. I do not know every page of every ordinance. I know the ordinances for the city controller and the members of council. Those ordinances, I am agreement in. This is why we have a legal department and why we have people to look it up. So yes, I did make an error, and I publicly admit that, but I'm not making the error twice again. It was pointed out to me, and please make sure that you understand that's what I'm saying. And as for the vast majority of people that travel, you made my point, I have to make sure that those buses continue to run out to Mill Creek so that people in Erie can get those services that they use out in the county. That's my last comment, Madam President.
Anybody else?
Thank you. Even though this is under new business, naturally, it isn't so new. As liaison and sponsor to this resolution, the reason I'm sponsoring, because I am liaison, but I cannot support it at this time. Nothing against the appointments the mayor would like on the board, nothing against the mayor himself, nothing against my colleagues. But I invited the two board members in question to our caucus meeting this evening because we were hearing from the newspaper, the media, the lawyers, from different individuals, they did, they didn't. We wanted to get the facts straight in here, straight from them, whether they did or they did not resign. And in the back there, they stated, both of them, neither one of them did resign their board position. So, what that means to me is, how can we put, appoint five new board members to a board that we're only legally allowed to appoint, that has already two on it, that means there'd be seven appointees from the city? And until this is taken care of the correct way, these two gentlemen are still on the board. So we cannot put five new appointments on there, that would make seven. So I think it would be unethical and possibly illegal for us to actually do that. So at this point, I cannot support that. Liz, I appreciate you taking the bus. I wish I could take the bus more. I have traveled it once or twice a year, but sometimes I just got to get some places, and I can't figure out routes to do that. So as a convenience, I'm driving my truck. But one other thing I did want to state, when we were at our finance meeting last week, and we were listening to the solicitor from the EMTA, she said, "It appears they resigned because the board voted on it." Well, from what I understand, the board does not have that authority to vote on somebody's resignation. That resignation has to go to the mayor, and that did not happen. So, like I said, there's too many question marks, too many things that are in the gray area that I cannot vote on this at this time. Thank you.
Madam President, thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Audrey Williams, for coming up and speaking. I think it's very important that you love your job. I live at a bus stop, and I wave to the bus drivers when I can, and talk with the people who are waiting for the bus. And there's many different reasons why they drive the bus, and they obviously like doing so as well, and I like to take my grandchildren every once in a while. I am voting for the new appointments, just because I respectfully thank Mr. Rush and Mr. Grack for their volunteer positions. But I come from a family of five kids, and my father and mother used to say, "What we do for one, we do for all." And in just reasoning that if Mr. Rush and Mr. Grack were allowed to stay, well, why not everybody else on the board? And as our mayor, I am, Mr. Joe Schember, going to believe what you're saying, you know, that it's time for a whole new board and to begin anew. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Why can't we all just get along? Oh, Lord. To say the least, this is a mess. Personally, I think it could have been done a different way, two or three different ways. I've known Mr. Rush for over 50 years. I've served on committees with him. I know on that board, he is a historian. He worked for mayors in the city, he worked at the county, he ran a program in the state. And I don't think Mr. Rush resigned at all, nor Mr. Grack. As stated, the attorney for the EMTA couldn't give us a solid answer to the question Councilman Merzke asked her. She wouldn't. We discussed this many times, and I, I just know that there's some underlying, some underlying things happening. You know, you got your gut feeling. More important to me is the operation, or the continued operation of EMTA. The buses will continue to move with or without Mr. Rush and Mr. Grack. They'll continue to move with the new individuals that the mayor is recommending. And that's the most important thing, that the bus, EMTA, continue to roll, continue to grow, continue and expand its coverage of riders, expand further into the outlying townships and boroughs. I do not like the way this played out. I agreed with Mr. Merzke's recommendation. I thought it was great. Let the two finish their term. But we must understand that the process is, those are the mayor's appointment. Until that change, that is, that's his appointment. We don't have appointments. We have to ratify it, but we don't have that appointment. Based on the facts and based on that young man who's a bus driver, he kind of turned me around this evening. I seen a happy bus driver. That's what it's about. He'll keep his route going. He don't have time to get into this political mess. It should never occur this way. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Roll call for the vote.
Roll call, Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Kwiatowski.
No.
Mr. Merzke.
No.
Mrs. Schoff.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
No.
Mr. Witherspoon.
Mrs. Arrington.
Okay, this resolution will adopt four to three. And we do have a waive rules tonight, Madam President. This was, this is a resolution to honor those who served in World War I. And it was going to appear on the agenda for our November 7th meeting, but the cosponsor wanted to move it up to tonight, so that's what we're going to do. So voting to waive the rules, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Merzke, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. By Mr. Kwiatowski, seconded by Mr. Merzke, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie in support of a national tolling of the bells to honor those who served in the Great World War. Whereas a century ago, the resources of the entire nation were brought to bear on the war effort of World War I, when 4.7 million American families sent their sons and daughters to fight. And whereas during the war to end all wars, 116,516 Americans gave their lives, and more than 200,000 were wounded, exacerbated by new technological and industrial developments. And whereas on November 11th, 1918, known as Armistice Day, ended the fighting of World War I at the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month, launching a rippling toll of bells as traditional expression of honor and remembrance. And whereas November 11th, 2018, at 11:00 a.m., celebrates the 100th anniversary of this profound day in history, as Americans across the nation are encouraged to toll bells in remembrance of those who served in World War I. So therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Erie, Pennsylvania, and the City of Erie, in the spirit of cooperation, joins the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the County of Erie, and the nation in declaring the tolling of the bells for Erie County on November 11th, 2018, at 11:00 a.m. Be it further resolved that citizen Mary Jane Koenig is hereby commended for her individual efforts to bring a community remembrance, which is the greatest tribute we may give to the 45 million casualties suffered worldwide in the war to end all wars. Ms. Allen, Ms. Kwiatowski, Mr. Merzke, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. And that'll take us to committee reports, Madam President.
Mr. Merzke.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a few things to report from the Convention Center Authority. The Convention Center Authority, in cooperation with the Erie Sports Commission and Mercyhurst University, had, this past weekend hosted the Icebreaker Tournament, which is the NCAA Division One Men's Hockey Tournament. We had the number-two team in the country, Notre Dame, playing Mercyhurst, and it went to a tie and then to a shootout, and unfortunately, the Mercyhurst Lakers went down in the shootout. But it was a very, very good game, and the quality of hockey that was in our city was unbelievable. There were six, on the Notre Dame team alone, six NHL drafted players playing hockey on our ice, and I thought it was just, the place was packed, crowds were big, and it's good news for the Civic Center. They also have Sesame Street Live coming up, and that's for the kids this week. And then I also attended the Giuseppe Muzini Charitable Foundation Award Dinner. I want to recognize Donna Carlino, who was their honoree this year. Donna has done a lot in the community, way too many things to name, but I wanted to wish her, wish her well and congratulations. She's a city resident, lives in Glenwood, and she's done a lot for this community, and congratulations to her. And that's all I have to report for today. Thank you.
We held our study session on October 4th about the sewer bond issue, and then I attended the Sewer Authority meeting just yesterday, I think it was, seems like ages ago already. City Council will be asked to give first reading approval to the bond issue at our November 7th meeting. It's a, it's a $29 million project with public money, and I am going to recommend to my city council colleagues that we work on a checklist for local hires, training, and sourcing. This may be an opportunity to actually look at, how do we get a community benefit agreement for this project? As you, if you've been following what else is going on in the news, you know, the Erie School District is also looking at a number of construction projects. So I think that would be another opportunity to work on a checklist for local hires, training, and sourcing for that. The, the reason the Sewer Authority, which is a fiscal agent, would like to get this bond issue taken care of is because interest rates are rising, and not enormously, but if you're following the action of the Fed, so they will be coming to us for that first reading approval. As I mentioned, I attended the Pennsylvania Chapter of the American Planning Association Conference. I was able to go through an arrangement, Erie Insurance had some sponsorships available in exchange for me doing some volunteer work. They're actually selling 50-50s, and I think I did an okay job at that. I'm not really good, good at, as a salesperson, but I had fun doing it. So I attended sessions on blight, affordable housing, civic engagement, zoning, land banks, and mass transit. There were some very good, low-cost ideas on how to make neighborhood improvements. We heard keynote speeches from Kevin Wright of Yarden Company, which has done work in Cincinnati, and which, Yarden Company is also, I think, going to be doing some consulting with EDDC on some things in Erie. And one of the interesting things, the person, Kevin Wright from Yarden Company, lives in Kentucky, just over the line from Cincinnati, I believe, and he talked a little bit about, one of the things that I've been interested in, in Cincinnati, is that there is a program there for minority entrepreneurs. I think it's called MORTER. And he said that the first microbrewery has just been opened by an African-American entrepreneur in Cincinnati. So this will be interesting to see what ideas, he, he brings to Erie, but helps us generate on our own. And we also heard from Charles Marone of Strong Towns, he's from Brainerd, Minnesota. It was really good exposure. It was really good exposure of our city to planners from all around Pennsylvania. It's always cool when you have people come from Philadelphia and realize that we're in the same state, and that we have a lot of amenities and good people here. And I also made some good contacts with a number of people, including a planner from Allentown, who's involved in historic preservation, so I intend to follow up with him. And I just wanted to speak on the alternative lawn ordinance, FRETDA. I don't know if we're supposed to actually talk directly to people in the audience, but I did end up talking to two planners about how to approach that, and it may be more a question of, of training with the, so we haven't forgotten about it. So I just want you to know that we haven't, have not forgotten about it, and we know how important that is in terms of rain gardens, you know, with runoff and everything, so we haven't forgotten about that.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have a report, but I'd just like to share a program that JFK is putting together beginning tomorrow. In order to become a PIAA basketball official, you have to be 18, first and foremost. They're starting a program for their 15, 16, 17-year-old PIAA training, and these young men and ladies will go through, in some cases, a year, in other cases, two or three years of constant training on rules, integrity, and how to officiate a game. I've been able to get PIAA officials to attend, to be trainers, and they have a grant to make this happen. Also, I'd like to thank Dave Moverhill and the Parks Department for delivering the portable baskets that we'll be using. The players will be six, seven, eight, nine-year-olds, so, and they're gonna break every basketball rule in the book, so this'll be a good training for them. So just want to give kudos to John F. Kennedy Center. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President. Just two items I have. I want to commend the administration on working with HUD on our CDGB funding. It was very, we were shocked early spring here, early summer, that some of that funding was gonna be taken away on where it was allocated to our community policing and other areas. So I appreciate the efforts to get them back on course after 36 years doing it that way, and it, it helps both the community as well as it helps our city budget yearly. The only other thing, although it was only first reading, I'm sure it will pass for sure, but I want to thank the Erie Social Club, the Knights of St. George, for donating 20,000 of their gaming monies that they get at their club to the Erie Police and the Bomb Squad. It's great that some of the social clubs are doing that. We've had a number of them do it in the past. We appreciate it dearly. It really, really helps the grand scheme of things for our public safety mainly. And once again, if any of the other clubs out there would be interested and willing, it would be awesome. But that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I will be going to the CBA Coalition at Blasco Library on Tuesday, October 23rd, and I invite any city resident out there who wants to know more about what they have to say and the people involved in moving Erie into a couple development. Thank you for hosting that, Erie County United. I am for the alternative landscaping ordinance that I would love to see passed, hopefully in 2019. I have been going to city planning mission committee meetings and watched the process last year in doing that. And what is an alternative landscape? It's an area that has been planned and designed with the intent to control, direct, and maintain the growth of native and/or natural vegetation, trees, understory trees and shrubs, wildflowers, ferns, forbs, herbs, flowers, fruits, and vegetables, including ornamental, edible, and non-edible plants. Landowners must maintain their alternative landscape in a manner which will not endanger public health or welfare. Alternative landscapes consisting of plant species with flowering stems, branches, and/or trunks may grow to any height, as long as they are not planted so densely as to create a solid effect. They must have space between them to create a see-through effect for a distance of 10 feet from the curb or edge of the street. Alternative landscapes beyond a distance of 10 feet from the curb or edge of the street may grow into any height and may be planted at any density, so as long as they will not endanger public health or welfare. The owner or occupier shall be responsible for the selective removal and destruction of noxious weeds within lands of their own ownership or control. Alternative landscapes must be maintained in a manner which prevents erosive conditions from developing. And David Brennan wanted to bring this into fruition, and unfortunately, he didn't make it because it was his time up. I mean, he's still living, but. It is recycling and leaf collection time. Do not use cardboard boxes for compost. Do not use garbage recycling or any other non-compostable bags. Do not place compost in garbage. Do not include animal waste or cat litter. Leaf collection has been running from September 30th, and it goes through November 29th. Compositable bags may also be used in addition to open hard containers. Only bags stating they meet ASTMDS400 standards for compostability may be used and are designed to break down in municipal composting operations. And everybody got this sent to their house. I have it hanging on my door to remind me, but some people forget. As far as the quality of life ticketing, these are already laws that have been enforced. But there's new generations moving into Erie, new people, and perhaps we could have a welcome wagon that some organizations used to do, I don't know if they do, but as they welcome the city residents into housing and apartments, perhaps they could get a list of the ordinances. Someone had suggested that to me instead of doing, and I thought that would be pretty nice, because if you're from out of town, or even if you're not, and you're a new homeowner, you don't know what's going on. And if you're not, like, going to these meetings or whatever, you don't know the rules, you don't know the laws. So it would be nice to have a welcome wagon and very cheerfully say, and here is how we make Erie a better place. Here are some ordinances, so there you go. I go to the water meetings, and I went last week, the 100% design of the Richard S. Waschaleski anyways. I guess my time is up, but they have been doing a lot of improvements around Erie, and they continue to do so. Thank you, Madam President.
I attended, after the last council meeting, we attended Coffee with a Cop, which is a very, was a very interesting program, and I think it's something that was long overdue. The reaction from some of the members of the public, that for the first time in their life, had a chance to talk to a police officer, not under duress, or not in a hurry, in a relaxed manner, I think did a lot, and I think we need to do more of that. And the feedback, I think, is gonna pay out dividends, much like we found out when we used city police officers in the public schools many years ago. A rapport is built up, and I think people will naturally come forth, and I think it's gonna have a lot of good fruition. I met with the Parking Authority on the problems that were discussed last meeting. I didn't get a positive answer from Mr. Massing. I plan on having him address the council at a future date. I did discuss him about what appeared to be a woman who was targeted. If you drive around the city, you see a lot of people parking in front of driveways, on sidewalks. You need, only go up to East 38th Street in my neighborhood, and you can see plenty examples of people blocking sidewalks, no tickets. So although he didn't admit it, I said, council is very concerned that this doesn't get out of hand, and that if somebody is targeting this woman, let's find, let's get to the bottom of it and find out who's the complainer, and can we get to a solution to the problem. Last thing we want to do is force citizens out of the City of Erie for battles with their neighbors. We also discussed the application problems that some people in the city were having, and I would suggest to anybody that's having a problem with the Parking Authority app to call them. They will, they have a gentleman there that'll answer all your questions, and you can give them any of your feedback. It'll go a lot further than going through us and going through the administration. Just call the Parking Authority and tell them what bothers you with your app, or what you'd like to see added. And I'm sure if they can do it, they will, because it's a, they told us it's a work in progress. They will be putting another kiosk in place shortly and trying out another company. So there'll be a decision made after the second kiosk company is put up. And so if you have any feedback, I urge the public to get back to them. PML Summit, I attended that with Councilman Winarski, and I was, I took some classes on pension issues and the blight problem. I was rather impressed that everything they talked about, we seem to be doing here at the city already. But I have a couple of things I'm gonna present to the administration, that, to the grant writer, that there's programs we may be eligible for. And I'll get together with the mayor about some other things that were discussed, the issues that were approved by the board, going forward on some of our issues legislatively. And finally, on the quality of life ticketing, there seems to be a lot of apprehension out there, and as Councilwoman Schoff said, these are all laws that have been there, they just haven't been enforced. And to many of them, they seem like they're overkill, but if, like me, if you live next door to a field that has grass eight feet high, that certainly is not alternative growth. We have to be very careful what we call alternative growth. It's gonna be a work in progress, and our people have to be trained and recognizing what it is, because the field next to me is definitely not natural growth. It's natural weeds, and I spent a whole summer battling woodchucks and skunks coming out of that field. That's not what the citizens everywhere want. And we have to be careful about farming. Council, when they approved the farming issue, designated areas that we could do it in. We gotta remember that this still is an urban city, and we need to proceed very carefully. And concerning vehicles, like business vehicles, nobody's against their neighbor parking one vehicle in his driveway. What we are, what they are against, and I got many phone calls on it, was a company that had three, four, and five vehicles parked in the driveway on the street, and it's a residential area, not zoned properly. That they have a problem with. They did not move into an urban area, a residential area, to have a business run. Even down my street, I have people working on cars. It's a constant battle. I did not move into that neighborhood to have a car shop at the bottom of my hill. And I realize everybody has to make a living, but not in a residential area that's not zoned for it. I have a picture of an area in the city where you were talking about welcoming people. Well, we've always had immigrants in the city, and we've always had newcomers, and we've always had people that were transplants here. But the one thing in the, I'll end my comment real quick. The one thing I did notice in that picture, and I won't mention the neighborhood, but the neighborhood today is not the same neighborhood. Even with the immigrants that came to this country and knew nothing about our rules, that area, if you looked at the picture, is clean, spotless, the grass is cut, and the hedges are trimmed. The streets are clean, and I'll, if you want to look at the picture, I'd be glad to show it to you. That's, thank you, Madam President.
I don't have any comment. Mayor?
Thank you, and I'll be, I'll be brief, just gonna talk about two things. What I just wanted to give you, an update on the cost of the solicitor's office that, you know, you approved, our part-time hourly solicitor, and we've, the bottom line is, we, we're about 100, we're projecting this year will be about $158,000 lower in total costs in the solicitor's office than we were last year. Part of that is because it has reduced the staff from seven to five, and they're, but they're still getting the work done, they're doing a great job. In terms of the head solicitor, that cost is gonna be down about $20,000 from what it was last year with, with the full-time, you know, solicitor with benefits. So I just wanted to kind of give you an update on what's going on with that. And the other thing I just want to mention briefly is community policing, you know, which Cass talked about with Coffee with a Cop, which was a great event. I mean, I was down at it as well. There are great conversations going on, and that's part of what we're trying to do with community policing, with our, with our city police. We want the community to look at the police as people, so I've been trying to call them peace officers, not law enforcement officers. They certainly will enforce the law, but the vast majority of people are good, law-abiding citizens. And I'm, when I say the vast majority, I really believe like 99% of our residents obey the law and respect the police, but I want them to feel they have a good relationship with the police. And I wanted to tell you a brief story about one of our new police officers, Officer Valoud. He was hired a little over two months ago, and the other night, he was, on third shift, he was following a car down State Street that was going 55 miles an hour, and he said he got behind the car just because he thought if he sees a police car behind him, he'll slow down. He didn't slow down. He wasn't really planning to pull him over because the car kept going, and he couldn't see who was in the car, it was tinted windows. He did pull him over. When he walked up to the window, the fellow had his cellphone out, recording the conversation, and the fellow later posted it, actually, on Facebook or the internet or whatever, however you do that, I'm not real familiar with that. But, and the fellow, and the people that saw the video basically said he was very abusive, he was disrespectful, but Officer Valoud, again, is, is about, at that point, about in his first month on the job, was respectful, he didn't react to the, the negative things the guy was saying, and my understanding is, in, in the internet, you know, the fellow that actually posted the video got the negative comments, and the police officer was kind of praised for how well he handled it. That's what we're trying to get our police officers to be like, and I was really proud of how Officer Valoud handled that, so, thank you very much.
I feel a little bit of pressure when I pull the microphone. We had a four to three vote, and we had a little bit of disagreement, and that, that's part of the beauty of small government, but I wanted to give everybody some level of assurance. First of all, you've made five appointments. Some of those are not residents of the city. I've given an opinion that I don't believe that that is a requirement that applies, so I don't have a problem with the five appointees. The issue that seems to be here is, did two resign or not? And so maybe I can give some piece to everybody. Either they did or they didn't. You have the ability to fill vacant seats. You have filled five vacant seats. It is possible, from the discussion, that we only had three vacant seats. If, to the extent that two of those seats are not vacant, that's an issue between the members of the board and the board. If they resigned, the seats are vacant. If they didn't, the seats are not vacant. If they are vacant, your appointments are good. If the seats are deemed not to be vacant, then your appointments to those corresponding positions would be void. So I don't know that, everyone is passionate, and I love that, but at the end of the day, it's really an issue between those two members and the board, not so much council. Councils made their appointments, and you either had three or five appointments, so when I go home tonight, I got no issues. The issues that are still out there, nor should you, the issues that are out there are really between those two members and the board. Thank you.
Council meeting is adjourned.
City Council adjourns at 9:30. Mrs. Arrington, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.